He's ready to rock. I'm not seeing that so. Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of November 8th, 2017. As we start all school committee meetings, I'd like to remind you that we are recording this and we are also broadcasting it live and we are recording it for maybe using at a later date. So, please keep that in mind. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I said greetings, everyone, and thank you all for coming this evening. I'm gonna move around on the agenda just to get some people in and out of here. We have some representatives from the district attorney's office. We have the fire chiefs and police chiefs, so I'm gonna do the best I can to get them in and out of here. We have some people from the food pantry and then we can get down to our normal business of the night. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 18th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? And just for everybody's thing, we did a Masco. It was called 101 Laws, I believe. You do not have to abstain from voting on minutes of a meeting that you were not at. You're voting at the document that is presented at the meeting. That's what you're voting. So, you don't necessarily have to abstain. I learned that minute 101 this week. A student advisor is out on assignment. She's not gonna be with us this evening, but she will be at the next meeting, giving us a report of what's going on. I'm gonna go right to the drug use and survey report. We have Ed Jacobs and Gabby with us this evening to give us a report. Thank you both for coming. I know you're not strangers here. You've been here before and it's good to see you both and thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for having us. Ms. Gabby Perucchio, sir. So, we're happy to be here. Gabby's gonna do a lot of the speaking tonight because she's well-versed in this data, has looked at it. Just to say to you that this is drug-free community money that we're using. It's we're in the fourth year of these dollars. It's a five-year grant. We're hoping on getting another five years. So, we'll start that application probably within a year, obviously, and then, just so we know we're included in that, it's Whitman Hansen, Rockland, East Bridgewater, and the town of Rockland. And the drugs that we focus on are the ones that we needed to make sure that we were addressing in our application was the opioids and then misuse of prescription drugs. This is under 18. I'm gonna leave it to Gabby at this point.
Okay. So, I passed out two different sheets for you to get a better understanding of what I'm talking about when I talk about the statistics of substance use in Whitman Hansen. And so, the first one-pager is eighth-grade data because last year we were approved to survey eighth graders as that is the, one of the grades that we focus on, in addition to ninth and 11th and 12th. And so, today, we're just gonna go a bit through the eighth-grade data and then show you some trends from 2016 to 2017 amongst the ninth, 11th, and 12th graders because looking at the overall data is kind of inconsistent right now because we didn't survey eighth grade in 2016 and then we didn't survey 10th grade in 2017. And so, when you look at the eighth-grade data, it's pretty straightforward, but in terms of past 30-day use, it's pretty much a lower percentage. 4% of students reported alcohol use and that includes anything from one day to 30 days. 4% reported marijuana use, a little bit higher for alternative cigarettes, which was 7%, and then 1% for prescription drugs. And then you look at the perception of risk, which is how harmful do they feel that substance is? And those percentages are very high as they include slight risk, moderate risk, and high risk. And so, 98% believe that alcohol is a high perception of harm. 91% of students believe that marijuana has a high perception of harm. And then 91% believe that alternative cigarettes provide a great risk, as well as 96% reported for prescription drugs. And then on the right column, you'll see parental disapproval and peer disapproval. So, what those mean is how harmful do they see their parents think that those substances put them at risk? And then for peers, it's how do they feel their friends think it is? And so, those also look pretty high, 99% all the way through for parental disapproval. And then, the one that stood out in peer disapproval among eighth graders was alternative cigarettes, which 85% of students believed that this would put them at little to wrong and very wrong. And so, that just gives you a bit of a snapshot of eighth grade. And then, when you look at the next PowerPoint, which I provided you with, this shows trends from 2016 to 2017. And there's a bit of a description on each of these pages for each graph because they look a bit confusing, but you're all looking at a black and white color of this image and each of these, the top line, for instance, on past 30-day use is from 2017 and the bottom line is 2016, but for your knowledge, you're not gonna be able to really tell that with the black and white. So, for instance, this is ninth-grade data for past 30-day use on that first sheet. And what you see is this increased from 2016 to 2017. So, there was a drastic increase in alternative cigarettes amongst ninth graders, so there's 5% significant increase amongst that group. And then if you flip the page, amongst 11th graders, there was actually a decrease. And so, you'll see 9% decrease in alcohol past 30-day use and then a 13% decrease amongst marijuana past 30-day use.
So, Gabby, on that, on that second graph you're talking about, 2017 is the bottom line?
2017 is the bottom one, yep.
Thank you.
And so, and then when you look at 12th graders, the top line is 2017 and the bottom line is 2016. You see an increase in all substances except for prescription drugs. So, there was a 6% increase in alcohol. There was a 9% increase in marijuana. And then there was a 6% decrease in prescription drugs. And then if you flip the next page, this shows you how the trends occurred across grade levels. So, for marijuana use amongst ninth, 11th, and 12th graders, there's a sharp increase. And then for alternative cigarettes, there was a steady increase as well, with 35% of 12th graders reporting past 30-day use of alternative cigarettes. And then if you flip the page again, we go into that perception of risk. And that's how harmful the student feels that substance would be on their body. And so, those answers combine the question slight risk, moderate risk, and great risk. And in this case, there was a 5% increase in people reporting the perception of risk of alcohol, so that increased. So, more kids felt that alcohol was harmful to them. And then for 11th graders, it stayed pretty consistent in that, in that case for each of those substances. And then if you flip the page again, the perception of risk amongst 12th graders, it stayed consistent for alternative cigarettes and prescription drugs, but there was a 5% significant decrease in marijuana. So, 12th graders saw less of a risk for marijuana. And then for the grade, by grade level, the perception of risk for marijuana, you can see across all grade levels, there's a steady decline from ninth grade up until 12th grade, which has been consistent across all substances. And then in terms of alternative cigarettes, on the next page, you'll see there's an initial decrease in the perception of harm towards alternative cigarettes, but then it goes back to an increase amongst 12th graders, which is an interesting finding.
So, Abby, what the, excuse me, just for interrupting for a moment.
That's fine.
What the graphs are showing is as the children age, they think the risk is less.
Yep, exactly.
In all categories.
Exactly.
The younger they are, the more they think the risk is. The older they are, the less they think the risk is. So, it kind of gives us a showing of where we have to focus the...
Where we should start.
The education starts here and the focus ends up over here.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And then we get into parental disapproval in terms of the next few graphs I'm gonna show you. And for ninth graders in particularly, it decreased slightly except for alcohol and really those numbers look very high amongst the ninth graders in terms of their perception that their parents feel that this would be harmful. And then when we get into the 11th grade responses, it increased slightly except for prescription drugs, which stayed the same, which is at a high of 99% of students believing that their parents would feel it'd be wrong. And then for 12th graders, it also stayed consistent. And now, when we move to marijuana, on page eight, the parental disapproval of marijuana, it decreased steadily amongst the 12th graders as well, which we see another common theme in this data. And so, more students in 12th grade think that their parents would think it's not as wrong as did the eighth, the ninth graders. And then when we look at alternative cigarettes, there is a decrease in the parental disapproval, their perception as well. And when we move into peer disapproval, which is the last core measure that we study amongst your students, this is their perception that their friends feel that it would be wrong. And so, that's their opinion of what they would feel. And so, this decreased except for prescription drugs in 2017, which the bottom line is 2017. So, there was a 9% decrease in students' perception of, perception of peer disapproval among marijuana and alternative cigarettes. And then for 11th graders, there was an 11% decrease amongst students believing that alternative cigarettes, their friends would feel that would be harmful. So, there's been a common theme amongst alternative cigarettes and marijuana. Those perceptions have changed as well as past 30-day use. And then if you flip to the last two pages, we see amongst 12th graders, it even gets a little different. So, there's a 5% increase in peer disapproval for alcohol. There's a 15% decrease in peer disapproval for marijuana. And there's a 6% decrease for peer disapproval of alternative cigarettes. And then we jump back to an 8% increase in the peer disapproval of prescription drugs. So, it kind of fluctuates between substances in terms of the 12th graders in this case. But if you look at across grade level, it decreases dramatically. From ninth graders, 79% believe that their peers would think that marijuana is wrong in comparison to 30%, 32% of 12th graders who would think marijuana is wrong. And lastly, peer disapproval of alternative cigarettes, this decreased dramatically as well, looking at that last graph. So, I know data is a little bit hard to gather, grasp your head around, but we can certainly send you all of the frequencies that we conducted in Whitman and Hanson. We did survey eighth grade in both Whitman and Hanson this year. And going forward, we'll be able to look at the cohorts. These, this data is looked on a grade-level basis because we weren't able to, we weren't able to survey eighth graders in that first year, but then going forward, we can look at, well, what did those 11th graders think when they became seniors? So, in one instance that I can give you an example, 34% of 11th graders in 2016 reported past 30-day use of alcohol, so 34%. But then when they were seniors, 46% of students reported alcohol past 30-day use. So, there was that 12% increase when they became seniors. So, it'll be really interesting to see those numbers and that shift amongst cohort. But what I just showed you tonight was just by grade level. So, what did that same, what did that ninth grader think in that grade level as in 2016 and then in 2017? And so, that just gives you a brief overview of the data. We are looking to do it again this year and then one more year following for the drug-free communities grant funding. But with your permission, we, again, would love to be able to survey them, eighth, ninth, 11th, and 12th graders for the next year.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Gabby or Ed? Chris?
So, I got two questions for you. So, what was the sample size for the survey?
So, on each of, I can, so in eighth grade, you'll see on that one-pager, the sample size is in the parentheses on each of those, and so, 305 eighth graders were surveyed. But then I am gonna pass around, just so I have this as a, as an additional copy, but for ninth grade, there was about 205 students surveyed. In 11th grade, there was 241 students surveyed. And then in, for 12th graders, there was 223.
Okay, so, a healthy survey size. And then, I can see in the bottom how you explain how they, how you got the disapproval question, so it looks like it was a little wrong.
Yep.
Wrong or very wrong?
Yep.
What were the, what were the inverted choices? So, what, was it a little okay, approve? What were the, what were the other choices?
So, for a perception of risk, it was no risk, so it compared it to no risk. And then for the parental disapproval and peer disapproval, it would be not wrong.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Kevin?
So, do you find the perception of risk anticipates behavior or responds to behavior? Because it sounded to me like your survey of seniors indicated that more are using it and then the perception of risk went down. So, that slipped. Before that, the perception of risk is hot. So, is that perception of risk actually preventing them from doing it? Or do they simply respond to their behavior and now it doesn't, it's not perceived as risky anymore because they're engaged in it?
I would say the perception of risk definitely, their perception of how harmful it is is going to contribute to them thinking that it's okay to use it for that first time, say. And so, what we see even in eighth grade, there's such a high perception of harm towards these substances and that should correlate with their substance use. But then, as you get older, I think there are many different factors that would also have an effect on somebody using, but the perception of risk would definitely be a huge factor in, in their use. I mean, if they see it as more harmful, then they're not gonna wanna use it. Just like prescription drugs, people's perception is increasing because of all this education we're, we're doing in schools, but in, for instance, alternative cigarettes, we don't have enough information about alternative cigarettes. We don't have enough information about how harmful they are. We can tell a student that they are harmful, there is tobacco in them and that they have many different side effects, but to them, they may see it as less harmful and they might wanna use it more. So, it definitely has a correlation, but...
And do you think that the marijuana numbers in particular might have been impacted by the push to legalize the substance?
We, we believe that.
It seems like that overlapped right with this survey, so that might affect...
Yes. Yeah. If they see it being legalized, then they probably also see it as being less risky because our government...
Yeah. This is all to suggest, I think it would be very useful to do it another couple of years and see how it...
Changes.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Quick one. So, what, so what are we doing? So, great, what are we gonna do with the data?
We're going to, I'm gonna entertain a motion and I think this gentleman right here just made it.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying, Kevin? You'd like him to make a motion to continue this program for one more year?
Yes.
Second.
Discussion?
So, from a discussion standpoint, obviously, great data, but what do we, what will we do with it?
We can talk about that in a minute.
If I could just briefly...
Go ahead, go ahead, Gabby.
We use a lot of the data on a regional basis to inform our communities about youth substance use, so we do a lot of social media campaigning and marketing within our towns. And so, that's one example of how we use it. We also use it strategically on how we wanna address substance use within our schools. So, we know that marijuana use and alternative cigarette use is increasing so that that's embedded within our strategic plan. But on a school level, we work on a monthly basis with Whitman Hansen Will to try to brainstorm ways to use this data, but we would certainly love the input of the school committee.
Yeah, the school's been great about, we offer resources or concepts. They've been great about, okay, pluses and minuses. So, things like sending a number of your captains to MIA conferences and we're able to take care of that bill because we have some funding for it. Or if we do a sports smart, we're able to bring the doctors in or whoever it might be and again, and do those kinds of things. We're able to see, over the summer, with Bridgewater State University, we're trying to train a lot more future teachers. We're also training a lot more athletic trainers because we really see that one of the, one of the gateways into particularly prescription drugs is the athlete who's injured. And so, that's, that's a gateway that we need to kind of, it should be a protective factor because, you know, you're involved in sports, but when they get injured, it becomes very much a risk factor. But there is a, we should be able to give you certainly a litany of everything we've done in the last three years and what we have on the agenda for the next two years. Be happy to slide that.
Jeff has something to add to.
I would also hope that, in conjunction perhaps with your office, that we could create an educational program. I know Barb Rogers has spoke to it in the past with us, how a mind isn't fully developed, her brain doesn't develop until it's 25 years old. So, even when they're younger, they may be of age to take a sip of alcohol, but yet it's more harmful and has more impact at the young age than it does to the older, more matured brain. Giving a student the most information possible and making them aware of all the risks. And I don't know that we do, we do a great job with DARE in the elementary schools, going into the middle school, but then sort of drops off. If we could somehow have something that could continue that education, I think that'd be a wonderful endeavor.
Principal Simonak?
So, just before, I wanted you folks to see the data. These guys have put together some great flyers, bathroom flyers, so when you're in the bathroom, using this data. 80% of your peers are not using opioids, you know? 75% of your friends don't think it's appropriate to vape in the bathroom. You know what I mean? So, they've provided those flyers and I have them ready to go. I just wanted you to get the data first before our kids see the statistics of the surveys. So, that's one of the simple ways that we're using this data. And then we're gonna look over at trends to see how we can infuse it in some of our programs and see where our populations are and our most vulnerable populations. So, I think the data's pretty accurate. From, you know, conversations I have with kids, absolutely, as they get older, yes, they're gonna try different things. The one thing I do think is, we've done as a coalition, a great job on the opioid piece. I think our kids are venturing away from that and they're scared. And the heroin piece, but there's new substances out there, like cocaine's making a refurbish back and ecstasy's coming back and those little things. And now marijuana licks with carfentanil, we're gonna talk about that a little later, is a piece that scares the daylights out of us, you know? But the data that I wanted you to see here before we get our marketing, and this was gonna be our blitz between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and just put up signs and flyers about the data that we have and really stress, it's not your peers that are doing it. Not 100% of our kids are smoking pot every day. This is the percentage of kids that don't approve of that and the parents. So, that's how we're using the data as we start.
Anyone else? I have a motion and a second. The motion was to continue on for one more year. We love what you're doing. Keep it up.
One more year for the evaluation.
All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Gabby. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and keep up the good work as we all know that education in these instances is the best cure sometimes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work with Whitman Hansen. Thank you.
I don't see where the police chief is. Are the representatives from Whitman and Hanson Food Pantry say to accept the donation for Miles for Meals fundraiser? If everyone could come up?
Sure. My name is Reagan Hayes. I am the president of the National Honor Society. This year, with our Miles to Meals Run 5K, we were able to raise about $4,000 to go to the Whitman and Hanson local food pantries. There'll be $2,000 going to each of the food pantries. I'd like to thank everyone in the community, all of NHS, all of the parents and families who helps to raise the money and donate and participate in the run. So, I'm honored to give you this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could you? Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming this evening. Okay. Do we have the police chiefs and the fire chiefs here somewhere?
Yep.
They were. There they are.
I can't see you guys.
There they are.
Relax.
As you know, we were here, we were here with Principal Simonak and we were discussing the use of Narcan and training teachers and administrators to use it. And we said at the next meeting, we would be bringing back some of the town officials here and we have Chief Benton with us. We have Fire Chief Grenow and we have Chief Mix from Hanson Police Department. So, thank you for coming, gentlemen. And whoever wants to be the volunteer spokesperson, jump right in.
They're all looking at me.
Tim, I knew it was gonna be.
You know, it's how they all took a step back.
Everybody likes firemen.
That's right. We're actually the I-Candy of the town, so. There were questions, I think, Mr. Seismack, people had for us?
So, I briefed the chiefs. I sent out an email saying that the committee, as we threw out our proposal about training staff about Narcan, you had some questions about liability, about disposal, you know, why and is there any medical effects to that? So, these are the experts in the field. I have some comments from Chief Thompson, but if, you know, Chief Grenow, these guys can take it away.
Well, since the last time, Tim, that, that we had discussed this right after the meeting, I think I called you the next day and said, "All right, give me the skinny on this."
You did.
So, can you give us a quick briefing on what you...
Basically, we were in a safety meeting and the discussion came up here about training the administrators of Narcan. And it's not the fact that we have concerns about the students using heroin or carfentanil or anything to that effect. Our main concern is, is, is the student bringing it home or from home or from a neighbor's house or dragging their backpack across like something and they put it down on the desk and the teacher wipes off that desk and now that teacher is exposed. Or the gym teacher opens up a school locker door, right, and gets a face full of white powder or whatever. So, so, our main focus is to train the administrators and the nurses on the use of Narcan for your staff. And if we have an unfortunate situation where one of the students does overdose in the bathroom or, or the bus or the field or whatever, then you have that tool readily available to you. Narcan, there, the only side effects to Narcan is if you push it too fast, it induces vomiting, which Chief Benton is well aware of from, from years ago. No, from years ago in the back of our Ramones. I warned him and he stepped back. You, you can't overdose on Narcan. What over, what Narcan does is it blocks the receptors in a basically, in layman's terms, it reverses the effect of that opioid overdose. So, the, I think there was a liability question on it. There really is no liability on your side because, because anybody who administers Narcan is covered under the Good Samaritan Act. It's no different than you using a, a defibrillator that sound like on your walls right now.
Questions? Anyone? Mr. Boyce?
Didn't that, so, speaking of that, Principal Simonak did mention about where we would keep that. Would it be with the automatic defibrillators and how do we keep it safe? And I think because it's a very expensive piece.
One of the recommendations from Chief Thompson, and I'm sure he checked with these guys, is to keep it in the nurse's office.
Oh, okay.
The AEDs are not alarmed, so...
Yes, okay.
This could disappear. We haven't had an AED disappear, but we all have access to the nurse's office. My other suggestion would be keeping it in the trainer's room as well, so that we have one dose or a couple doses down in the, in the PE area and one dose at this area. And then how we decide how it breaks up in the other schools, if we decide to move in that, move in that direction.
Excellent.
But that AED piece is, they're not secure. They're all...
Right, yep. Was the end of our last conversation, but thank you. Good to clarify that.
Anyone else, Fred?
Two things. One is viewpoint and another is, right after our meeting last time, six-month-old puppy being walked. Must've stepped on something somewhere and thank God the guy got his dog to the vet in time, but there was a dog that was overdosing. And obviously, the dog wasn't out doing anything malicious, well, there's no one on a leash. It can happen, if it can happen to a six-month-old lab, it can happen to anybody.
Absolutely.
I would just like to see it perhaps more in two spots, you know, in every corner of the building and on every floor, just as a safety precaution. I think it's a great thing. I thank you folks for bringing it to us and that's my opinion.
Paul?
Mostly for, probably for Jeff. We talked about training administrators... We talked about training administrators. Would it be mandatory for administrators or someone felt uncomfortable giving something like that? And how was, how would that work as far as who would be actually trained to?
I think that's a discussion we have internally with us. I mean, most of us are CPR AED trained, you know, as we're, we're almost the first on scene.
Right, I understand.
We're going to beat our nurse there. I'm getting older, I can't run as fast, but I'm quicker than Margaret right now, so. That's something here, I think Lexi's already been certified and trained. She was trained a couple of years back. Margaret would love to go through that. I think my staff, I can speak for them, they wouldn't mind having it just in case something happened, but I think the internal discussion amongst the leadership team would be good.
So are we just talking about high school? Are we going to move it down to middle school? Whereabouts is this all going to take?
This is a very early-stage discussion with the leadership team. However, today, Kyle Riley and I met with Beth Stafford and Kevin Kafka to discuss what are the implications with staff, with the collective bargaining agreement, what does this mean? And I think that's the next phase of this, to really determine who are the people who should be getting the training, you know. We'll work with our, you know, our chiefs to really help us get guidance on that. But at this point, Lexi's certainly been trained. I know Kyle and I talked about the issue of nurses and he's got, you've got a meeting with them, Kyle, soon, like.
Next week.
Next week.
On Tuesday.
So, you know, these are things we need to be bringing up for discussion.
Kevin?
Yeah, so the proposal is to have, is to have this in the building and then after that to determine where.
I think the initial piece was, we met in early October to talk about safety and security and clearly there is a concern from our safety officials that this is a risk for folks, that what can be on someone's clothing, something like that. So I think the next phase is in working with them to see where it is appropriate to have this.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's where we are with that. I mean, there's also costs involved in this as well and that hasn't been figured out. But we certainly didn't want to move forward with it until we spoke to the school committee and had a general understanding of what, of, you know, what this situation is.
Ally?
Obviously, there is a cost that we need to think about, but what, what is the timeframe that if somebody does OD on this, that they need to have Narcan? Would it make sense to have it on each floor or one, like what if it, you know, somebody's up on the third floor and the nurse has it and they need to get upstairs? Is there, would it be beneficial to have it on all floors?
Well, it's similar to CPI. You figure about four minutes and you're going to start having, you're going to start having brain damage. So it's no different than somebody, if somebody, I think people start getting kind of, for lack of a better term, uptight about Narcan because of what causes it. Yet, we wouldn't have this debate if it was an AED, right? And you need to look at it that way. This is a, to go back to your cost, it's $40 a dose. To go to your answer, the more that you can have around, the better. I personally carry two doses in my cruiser at all times. So the officers in Hanson, each one has been issued a dose for themselves. This has become a problem that goes beyond the initial users, so to speak. There's been accidental exposures. You bring up the dog as one. There were some police officers, I can tell you that there was an issue a year ago, the Pembroke Police Department opened up something by accident, a package, and was exposed. Falmouth, two officers were rushed to the hospital because somebody they arrested had it in their pocket and threw it at them. On the North Shore, officers did a search warrant. It was thrown at them. So this can become airborne. One of the more recent ones, and that came up in the security meeting that we had, was some officers went, had an arrest, didn't think anything of it. One of the officers, now this is like the next day, is in the locker room and notices like powder on his jacket, rushes it off and exposes everybody in the locker room and they had to go get Narcan. Chelsea had officers rushed. I get it, we're going into cars and things that your administrators probably aren't, but if it's, if we're being exposed at the level we are, it's going to be walking in your doors. So to me, it's a no-brainer to put some doses here. If you only want to let the nurses have it because they're the ones you're going to be calling for the CPR, because if, you're going to start doing CPR on these people. The first thing we start to do after we start our initial ABCs is you give them a squirt, even if you don't think they're a user. It doesn't hurt anything. So if you use one dose, it's $40. It only adds a few seconds to your CPR time. If that doesn't work, we usually give them a second dose because the carfentanil and the fentanyl is so potent now that what we used to use one dose is now taking two, three and four. We've had some six and eight doses that are being used before it reverses. So I would put it, I, in my mind, it's going to go building by building. I would give it to your nurses. I would give it to any of your trainers. I think you're, I know you're going to get into a union issue, but probably your phys ed teachers should really be concerned with that. Anybody that's going to be around, not only your student population, but the rest of the population that comes in here. One of the main reasons I started carrying my own dosages, I work sometimes at Foxborough Gillette, the 64, 65,000 people. I guarantee you, somebody walking by me on any given event, never mind the concerts, but even a football game, somebody is a user, somebody's probably carrying that. And the potential for somebody being exposed is big, so why not have it for 40 bucks a dose? If you can secure it somewhere, we carry it in our AEDs, it's tucked right in there because you're going to need the AED if somebody overdoses, because if the Narcan doesn't work, you're going to have to do CPR. So, you know, we have it tucked right into the pocket of those. That might not be an option for you. I know Chief Thompson expressed a concern about that. School nurses obviously makes sense, but if you have some other places or maybe you have, maybe you find a way to alarm your AED boxes and put it in there. But I think the more doses you can have around, the better.
Thank you.
Fred?
I would also be a proponent of seeing it at every school, in the elementary level as well, whether it's with administration or whether it's, if a six-month-old dog can have it, have it, get dosed or whatever you call it, you know, so can a six-year-old kid.
Is there any further discussion? I'd be entertaining a motion. Bob?
I think it's a great idea. I think we should have it, but I think I agree with Ruth. I think discussion has to be, so when it's implemented, who knows what their responsibilities are and people are comfortable with it, because I know some people might not be comfortable with that. Even using the AEDs, they might not be comfortable. I know, I know they'd have to do it eventually, but I think if that discussion is held, I don't see a problem with it happening, but I would hope that the people that are responsible for it are willing to do it, are well-trained and feel confident that they can handle that particular situation.
Chief, can you just briefly, I think it was Chief Mix, I asked him earlier in the evening, can you just briefly tell us how you would administer this, propose training? Because it sounded to me like it was pretty easy.
It comes in two different ways. One, one of the ways you can buy it, it looks like a syringe and it has a.
An amatorizer.
Amatorizer, I can never say it.
Those are big fancy words.
It looks like a little, it looks like a foam pyramid at the top. The ones that we started using, if you're familiar with Flonase or a nasal spray, that's all it is. You literally just put it in the nostril and squirt. It's, it's simple. I could teach my seven-year-old son to do it.
There's no needles involved or any of that? It's just like a nasal spray then?
It's, it's a nasal spray. If you, if you get a chance, look up Flonase, it looks a lot like that.
It comes pre-dosed, four milligrams, a package of two, so there's eight milligrams to it. And like Chief Mix said, it's just, if the person is down and out, you walk up and you squirt it up their nostril. That's, that's, that's the extent of it.
Is it available to the general public through a drugstore?
Yeah.
So you don't need a prescription? You can walk right into Duval's and buy it?
Right, don't they?
Great.
There's, I forget, well, under the, I think they call it an open prescription. I know Duval just had a, Duval's just had a thing Saturday with Whitman, Hanson, Will.
Yeah, we had the lab on.
The lab on, on how to do it. I've hosted in Hanson, overdose response class at one of the churches where just laypeople could come in, they were taught and it takes about 15, 20 minutes to be taught how to use it and, and we're giving doses. So social hospital, I know if somebody does go in, you're a family member or you suspect a family member, they'll give you a dose if you're in the emergency room for, for an overdose. So it's, it's readily available. For us, because we fall under medical controls, we've been buying it, I buy it through a state bid. I have a prescription from the medical control officer, which is Dr. Muse over in Brockton, and I just purchase the doses as I need it. It's $40 for two of the nasal sprays.
And all four departments have, have personnel that can do the training. So our departments would take care of the training in the district within reason.
I guess the motion I'd be looking for would be to move forward with what we've spoken about tonight under the guidance of Ruth Gilbert Whitner and Principal Simonak and the leadership team in giving them the opportunity to move forward with us.
So moved.
Second. Further discussion?
Would that encompass eventually going to the elementaries and middles or?
Well, the leadership team is, includes elementary, middle and high school. Actually, what we've done this year is we've had our principals really step up and we have Jeff representing the high school, George is here this evening, George Pharaoh's representing middle school and Julie McKillop Elementary. And it's really worked very nicely in how we've organized drills, how we've organized this conversation about Narcan. So I really see working with the three principals and the leadership team will be able to move forward with that.
I just want to make sure the motion does encompass moving forward.
I think we understand the risk is, is universal, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Gentlemen, thank you and thank you for being very proactive with us. It's something that, it's, it's there, let's not say it's not, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's do the gaming proposal.
Okay, and under new business, we're going to go to the e-gaming club proposal.
You guys can stay right here for a minute. So usually I wouldn't come before you about a club in the high school, but this is something a little outside the box and we're proposing something a little different. And I don't want the school committee to get slammed with questions from the general public saying, you guys are just playing shoot 'em up games after school. So these two gentlemen came to see me last spring about forming an e-game club and I had no idea what they were talking about. E-gaming is a real definite thing now for a good portion of students and it's not, it's not playing Mario Kart on Xbox. This is something involving computers and technology and programming and coding and strategy. So they made a presentation to me last spring and I kind of said, can we look at it in the fall? It's May. And they were persistent and they saw me end of September. Enough that we said, let's get it off the ground. They made a presentation to the Panther Education Trust and secured about $2,500 of funds to buy these cards, I don't know what the cards are, but they go into our systems that will really blow up the graphics. And the cool thing is, if we move forward with this club, these graphics can be used in our CAD program, in our DigiPhoto program, stuff that I don't have to buy or come to our district budget. This is through this club. So I'm going to have Tyler and Nolan give you a little perspective of what the club's about and some of the positives that this can really bring back to our school. Tyler?
So with this club, it's supposed to be a very competitive, like, place. Me and over 30-plus students, some being seniors, are really hoping to get this club as soon as possible. And we, a lot of us hope for this to be our lives in the future, because right now there are tournaments throughout the world for millions of dollars for just playing video games. And at a high school level, there's also scholarship money that's possible there. There's over 500 schools across the nation that compete in tournaments. And with that being there, a good amount of us, like, we really do like playing these games. We really do like to win and compete in these games. Everything within it is really like, honestly, it's like a sport, honestly. It's only a really real thing to compare it to. Some of us are in the top 5% of the world for this game, for these games. And none of these games are really like, like every single one is school-appropriate for the, like, they are. And based on the fact there are over 500 schools with these games inside of them, that's just more proof to the fact that they're school-appropriate. And it's like a very controlled environment, very, like, well, again, I say competitive. Everything about it is meant for that. And as Mr. Simonak already said, it will help the school too, because it'll help multiple classes. And, well, that's more or less the gist of it, like the overall thing.
One of the things I just wanted, I compare it to a 2017 version, version of Dungeons and Dragons, because it's very strategic. It's not shoot 'em up, it's not first-person shooter. I looked at the games. Mr. Glenn, one of my English teachers, is volunteering to be the advisor. We're working with Chad, we're going to throw this at him a little later, but we've really been working with Jason Cook. So Jason Cook's been really kind of helping them out, kind of going through this, but we really wanted the committee to understand what this is about. When these guys came to me, they said, look, there's a portion of the building that doesn't, they play sports, but they're not into, they're not the athletes and they don't do music. They do a little bit of everything. And then superintendent, the other day was talking about computer programming and we're trying to really push this program. These guys want to do this and in fact, they're trying to get jobs with technology to help us. They're juniors now, but this is just a real stepping stone for them to really bolster this. And then I, you know, happened to listen to 985, the Sports Hub, and I heard that Bob Kraft is sponsoring some of this stuff, so it's real, you know, there's a lot of money out there. And then they said, you know, there's scholarship money to be had and I wouldn't want to take away an opportunity for some of our kids who don't fit the, the model of something I have here and we can produce something at no cost for us and for the rest of our student body, so.
Also.
Being old-school, explain to me exactly how this works. I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I'm just, just to kind of explain it to me how it works.
To avoid going like too far in detail to believe. It's like, it would just be, it's very strategic. It's two teams competing against each other, as if, again, in like a sport. Each team has their own strategies, their own skill sets, what they do, and they just compete to win really.
So you're talking about competing with others?
Others, other schools across the nation.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And we're setting up ground rules and parameters of codes of conduct for our kids and, and different things like that. So it's not going to be, you know, we're just going to put on our headsets and swear, you know.
All right, thank, thank you. Mr. George?
Question, I mean, more towards Chad, safety student-wise, what's your opinion of this?
We've been, we originally talked to them at the end of last year about what it's going to take to kind of go through and because the games that they play are intensive for video, so I think one of the things they were looking for was getting money.
Of our graphics companies.
Video cards, video cards for the computers in order to actually play the games. So we started looking at it with them and we kind of, like Jeff said, we kind of just put it on, put it on hold until this year and personally, I haven't looked at it this year again, but it's, it's definitely a real thing, esports. I mean, like Jeff said, the Patriots bought an esports team and there's all, there's all large teams that are being bought because it's competitive and all you're really doing is playing video games with, as a team and you're competing against other people for large prizes. I mean, even, if you actually go on ESPN, they're actually have e-tournaments, actually. You watch people, watching people play sports on, on the computers. They put on a big screen and everyone watches the big screen, people playing games. So I think it's a, I think it's a great opportunity for the students that are really emphatic about playing these games and is a large group that kind of probably get left out on other things that don't fit their mold. But I think I, personally, I want to, I think we need to look further into how we're going to accommodate them for that, the computers, the space, making sure it runs with a lot of the games, making sure that the safety, the internet safety is taken into consideration with firewall, things like that, that need to be opened potentially if we're going to game sites or whatever that we need to get it for. So I think it's a great thing. I think as long as we can provide the safety of it and accommodate computer-wise and get them what they need, I think we can do it.
See, we didn't want to go for so far forward before bringing it to the committee and the committee said, you know what, back up a little bit. They secured funds. The presentation was overwhelmingly approved by the Education Trust. Again, it's hitting a portion of students that are looking for something that can bring back to our school. Jason's been great as far as the video cards and showing how they can be put into. Jason's been great as far as the video cards and showing how they can be put into our system. And the next step is, okay, securing the game going forward and actually putting something into place with the school committee having an idea of where we're going.
Ally?
I am somewhat familiar with this because my son's friend does this. He graduated Whitman Hansen two years ago, and I have to confess, I thought he was a lazy bum sitting at home, not doing anything. I couldn't understand why he didn't go out in the world and get a job. I didn't realize that this was his job. I think it would probably be beneficial if you can explain how it benefits you guys, what exactly you can win, what, how it would benefit the school, and so on and so forth.
Well, yeah, well, there's a community called HSL, which they hold tournaments for schools and they provide scholarship money, which that's one way it'll first off help the school and also help the students. And with how people do this, people will play these games for like fourteen hours straight in one day, even eighteen, and this is like their jobs. People will watch them online, play it, not even in a tournament. They'll just watch them play the game casually and they'll get paid thousands of dollars. This'll be, like, this is how they pay for their house and everything. And a lot of us are really hoping for that to be us, so.
So we're starting somewhere.
Yeah, this is, this would be the beginning of, this is what we hope to be our beginning.
We had a senior that graduated last year and was really talking to me about putting a lab together and multi-this, and it was like way out of my league. But he was doing this at home, and when he presented to his English class what his job was, he was making fifteen thousand dollars doing this. He had corporate sponsors, he had all this stuff. And the kids in class were like, "What are you talking about? This is, this is real stuff." And I think what these guys wanna do is find themselves a career. It's an opportunity, a stepping stone, to look at that. And I don't, and this is just these two, there's multiple. And when they start talking, when we've had our discussions about what we need, they're so in tuned to the technology, and it's so awesome to know that our kids know so much about technology. And we're not providing it, so I wanna give them a stepping stone to have that opportunity.
Fred?
Couple of different questions and I'm also just doing some research here real quick. About seven million dollars of e-gaming scholarships available. When you say that it's e-gaming, and I'm sort of answering some of the questions, League of Legends, Overwatch, can you explain what type of games?
It's Hearthstone.
That they are that you play, how many people on a team, what, you know, what do you have to do to win? Just trying to sort of grasp, you know, that concept a little bit. And also then I had some questions as far as what type of horsepower you need out of a computer. So it's gotta be more than just a graphics card.
Well, actually, we looked at the specs of the computers for the ones in room three-thirty-one. They do have everything that we need, with the exception of the graphics card. So that's why we're looking for that.
Okay.
So for the horsepower question, that's what that is.
Okay.
And then for the other questions you had, it varies depending on the game. The two games that we mainly intend to play are League of Legends and Hearthstone. League of Legends being the most played video game in the world with over sixty-seven million players daily. It's very, like, it's two teams of five. So it'd be our high school versus our high school, five v. five, and they just, to not go into too much detail about the game, it's you have your own role on your team. If you complete that role, then you help your team and you push to the enemy's base. And if you get there before they get to yours, then you win.
Okay, so not to sound stupid, you have a role.
Like?
I mean, I don't game, I don't know what this is at all.
Sort of like, there'll be like mages, which deal damage for your team, there'll be supports, which like heal, then there are tanks, which will take damage for your team. So that's, those are the roles, and that's for that. But the other game is Hearthstone, which is a card game. And it's only one v. one, so they do have three v. three sometimes with two people helping you. And with that, it's just you create a deck of cards, the enemy creates a deck of cards based on a catalog that you could choose from. And then you try to outwit and outsmart your opponent to beat him in the card game. So that's both the games that we intend to play. We are sort of hoping for other games, but that's something that we're looking at for in the future to be talked about. But those are the two games we wanna mainly focus on, and that's what they pretty much are, to avoid going into too much detail, because there's a lot.
They're two games, I bet it, and I'm comfortable with my kids playing. It's, again, not shoot 'em, not gambling, not anything like that. They're comfortable that, there's no age. I feel comfortable with a fourteen-year-old and an eighteen-year-old playing this game in the building without much, you know, we'll have parents that are, you know, if this is the game, this is what we present as they, they come to the club. But again, they don't want to detail. It's really a strategy game, and it's really getting kids to think outside the box using technology.
So I think the motion that you're looking for tonight, Jeff, is to entertain or to approve an e-gaming club to be added to the curriculum in the Whitman Hansen.
Extra-curricular activities. Again, I usually don't come with this, but this is so outside the box, and I just don't want the committee to get blindsided by parents saying, or taxpayers, like, "I can't believe you're spending all this money to play Mario Kart." It's not Mario Kart, you know? So yes, that is.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody knows what it is?
Yep.
More or less.
And I'm glad you're taking into effect, we're not getting blindsided and hearing about this on the street. This young man has been so patient, do you have anything to add?
Uh.
Don't be bashful.
I mean.
Climb right up to the microphone.
Well, he's been more or less whispering my ear things.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's, basically, it's a lot of strategy. It's a really, really much more, like, in-depth version of chess. Like Hearthstone, for example, you get cards that, in order to play them, you, they cost an amount of points. And per round, you only get a certain amount of points. So you have to think, "Oh, if I put this card down, what could he have? And then what can I do to counter that afterwards?" So it's, it's a lot of eight steps ahead.
Challenges.
Yeah.
And with that, with what you said, that is actually what people do, like professionals at that game will know every single card in the opponent's hand, even though there's over like five hundred cards, just because they've seen three cards the other person played. And they can just predict what's inside the entire opponent's deck, or at least for the most good people. People that are good at the game.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
Do you guys have a club right now that meets and you guys?
No, there is, there is another club, though, if you notice, there's posters.
I have a Mario Kart club as well.
Yeah.
Oh, cool. Nice.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand where we're going?
Yes.
Any confusion at all with anyone before I move to the vote?
No.
Everybody good? All those in favor? Thank you for coming forward. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have jumped around a little bit this evening. We're gonna go right back to the superintendent's report.
Okay, great. Okay, so we've done Miles for Meals. Just wanna commend National Honor Society and the high school for that. They do a 5K at the end of September. This has been going on for a number of years and just a fabulous, really, community service for our students and also benefits the communities. Also, in terms of the drug survey, just to, the DA's office, you saw Ed Jacobs here this evening, they've been incredibly supportive with their grants for Whitman Hansen. And they talked about a few of them, but we've been able to do a number of things over the past three years with their grant funding. And clearly Gabby is part of the Brockton area opioid prevention coalition, and we meet with them once a month. So there are a number of things that are going on in the district. High school's been very involved, and we've extended this to the middle schools as well. Last week, some of us had the opportunity to attend the MASSS/MASC conference that was down in Hyannis. We went on Wednesday, and the conference went through Saturday. And we have some people here who attended, so I'd like to hear from them. Whitman Hansen was very well represented. On the Wednesday of the conference, I had the pleasure of moderating a panel about the virtual academy that our southeastern regional collaborative organization has put together so that students here at Whitman Hansen and in southeastern Mass can take virtual courses when the ones we have as actual classes aren't available. So we got to do that. I was fortunate also to be on a panel with Carolyn Casey, who came to school committee last February to talk to you all about Project Three Five One. So we talked about that to our various school committee members and superintendents who were there. But the Peace Day Resistance was Thursday afternoon when our radar team presented in the ballroom. And very fortunate, many of the panel members are with us this evening. Chad Peters, who was on the radar pilot team, Jeff Simonak, George Pharaoh, Kyle Riley, myself, Brian Sealy is also a member, not with us here this evening. Christine is on the committee, but she was in Arizona, so she couldn't make it. But it was really, I think, a very positive experience for us as Whitman Hansen, Bob was the moderator, to be able to talk about how we've done our strategic planning, built the plan, the three pillars of success, and then linked it to the data that is sent to DESI every year, and how we're being able to use those radar reports, our strategic plan, to really make sound budgetary decisions and really try to move the district forward. So that was, to me, really the highlight. And when we went to the reception afterwards, and it was sponsored by Murphy, Hesitumi, and Lehane, we were stopped by people who said, "Thank you for that presentation, that was really helpful to us." So I wanna thank the folks who were here this evening, who were part of that. But clearly Whitman Hansen's presence was known at the conference in Hyannis. But we also had some committee members there, and I know Steve was there, Chris was there, Bob moderated. If there's anything you all'd like to add about the conference, things you've heard or saw that were helpful to you.
Chris?
Yeah, I thought I was, I thought it was, it was helpful, right? So to speak with some fellow school committee members from other districts, regions, I think it's interesting to understand some of the same challenges that we all face. So I think that was helpful. I think the keynote, Bill Daggett, he was good, you know, he was thought-provoking, so made you think a little bit about where education is going relative to, say, technology and innovation. And, you know, I think his, one of his points was, education continues to really improve, but if you look at what's going on in the world around us, it's, it's really hard to keep up. So I thought it was really well done.
I'm glad you were there. It's great. And Steve?
And, you know, also tandem with Chris, I was with Bill Daggett, heard him speak, and that was really excellent of what he presented. I know there's a lot of data and facts that came along with his presentation, but I thought it was all very interesting and brought a perspective, especially working in the computer world and hearing stuff like, "What's the next thing?" You know, I just glimpsed over Mr. Small's tablet for just a moment, I wasn't really staring, and I noticed an ad come up on the side. And that's because of what he had done probably prior within that window or browser or whatever.
Please tell everyone I was doing the research on the e-gaming. It wasn't Narcan that came up on the side, it was something else.
But anyways, and speaking of that, I, this was my third year. I started off with, in a class with Kyle Riley, with the social-emotional, you know, I rarely take this under my wing. I think you all know I have nieces and nephews, they've all twenty-somethings now, so they're all done in public schools. I've seen all of your families or heard about the different families, be it the Linems or whomever, and even my own family who had gone through schools. Just knowing and understanding and just to continue to learn about this social-emotional to me is just huge. I would hope in 2018, I could be able to become a foster parent or something, single foster parent. Life moves on after your parents are gone, and, you know, it's a whole different life when the twenty-somethings are all growing up, and I'm gonna become a great uncle next year. But it also gives me pause for saying, "I wanna be able to continue to do things." Along that same line, and we talked about it tonight, and we've talked about it at other meetings, was going to the general session for the opioids. That was tremendous. The Lernaco founder, Mrs. Peterson, that, she actually is a mentor to one of the security officers I worked with at the JFK Library. He had a son who went through the same thing, and he has literally spent all of his life finances, but wouldn't have it any other way, short of losing his, his home. And it's so interesting just to hear the stories that he tells, because it really grabs at you. It grabs at you in a different way than the social and emotional. So I can, these, these are the two things, I think, if you wanna call them my pillars, would be these two things that we're dealing with. And I know we'll continue to deal with them, and I just like the proactive way, we always take everything. And I think the, well, let's not recall him, the last piece, oh, when we also heard from the Middlesex District Attorney. And a doctor from Mass General, which I thought was really good, because, you know, maybe a lot of people did think, just point at the prescribers, but it's not that, and it's a lot more, and I know we're all still learning or have learned and continue to learn on this opioid crisis, so. Quite a bit going on. Plus, I had to step away for a Plymouth area collaborative meeting on Thursday, so I missed part of the fun with radar and everything, so.
Yeah, great. And Kyle was also at the conference, I wonder if you have anything you wanna share?
Really piggyback on what Steve just said is, I followed my own track over three days of being the social-emotional piece, making sure that they offered in each session probably five or six different selections for you. So for me, I was kinda thinking of the district and transitions we're going through and kinda my piece of what I'm charged to do. And I was thinking, you know, we need a district-wide plan to make sure we're reaching every student. And lo and behold, one of the sessions was developing a district-wide plan to make sure we reach all students. So that tied into the other social-emotional things that I went to. It really, for me, who's been in the business for a while and do this every day, it opens up my eyes, it starts conversations with my colleagues, and it really gives us a little pause as we're looking at programming for next year, where we're gonna put it, how we're gonna support it, how do we reallocate and use some of that data from radar to make sure that we're doing it smartly and not just doing it to do it and make sure that we're reaching all kids. I was having conversations in my office this morning with a family, and it was really around, we really look out for those kids who are on AP track and could be on Valve Victorian, and we really look out for the kids always, in every district, I'm not just saying Whitman Hansen, that have noticeable disabilities. Like, it's obvious to us when we walk up that, we'll say, in a wheelchair, have some kind of stress in their life that you can see physically, see. It's really the emotional piece that you don't know exists. We saw some pretty powerful videos and some pretty powerful speakers in Hyannis that I kinda drew my attention to, and let's not miss those kids in the middle and make sure we're attention to detail with them is just as good as everyone else, so. That was my takeaway.
And Bob, you were able to attend as well?
I did. School Committee Laws 101, the Attorney General's there, and there's been a lot of law changes as of October sixth of this year, having to do with meeting, open meeting law violations, school committees having inter-discussional, getting into discussions with each other and sort of entering into deliberation, but bordering on that, and the do-not-reply rules. And basically, you cannot deliberate with each other, period. Even if you put "do not reply," it means "do not reply." Now, there's no thing against six of us or eight of us or a quorum of this committee all being at a house party. Long as you're not talking about anything that goes on in this district, you're not breaking any rules. But if you do, you are. And when we get to radar, there were several other things that went on with Laws 101. In fact, I brought a packet back, I'm going to have, give it to the copy center and make up copies for everybody, because I thought it would be something that school committee members might like to read, the changes in the rules. Because this, it's very complicated, it was a two-hour discussion, there was a lot of discussion from other school committee members asking questions. We got kind of into a give-and-take of what goes on in your district, which, versus what goes on in their district. Then when we got to the radar part of the thing, Drew said I was the moderator and get up and talked about how we looked at it as a school committee when we decided to accept the pilot program, because it was another data-driven program. But this was one that, after seeing how all of the information came out of the data, it showed where Whitman Hansen was, what we are spending, where we are going, how we are utilizing the funding. It was really something that was an eye-opener, because numbers don't lie. People make assumptions and they sometimes get bent out of shape and not exactly translated properly. But the numbers didn't lie, and you could see it in the piece. And you could see the people as, the different people on the committee that Ruth had just mentioned, were coming up and talking about how it affected their school, or how they worked as a professional within the school district, or how they worked with the school committee. You could see that the interaction... You could see that the interaction was tremendous. And it showed the people, as we were talking to them, you could see them shaking their head, "Yeah, this happens in our district. Yeah, we're confused with this. Yeah, we don't have enough funding." Because the same subject came up time after time after time and again. We're operating on the theory of do more with less. And we talk about this all the time when we set our budgets. But after we get through the meeting, we had several sidebar, you know, with different people that were from different districts saying the same thing. And we're not alone. When we say this, when people are watching, they might think, "Well, the school committee's always saying they have to do more with less money." It's the truth, but it's not just here at Whitman Hansen. It's in every school district just about in Massachusetts, depending on whether you're urban or suburban. It's something that's across the... It doesn't help any, but it's there. So it was nice to be able to bring it up and show other districts and highlight what the problems that we have and see that we're not alone in this. So I thought it was great. It was really good.
I think it's a well-done conference. They do, I think, especially good job with keynotes, really high interest, and it was a very diverse program. One of the ones we didn't mention was that Noah Berger, who works with Massachusetts Taxes, did an extremely good presentation on the millionaire tax that everyone was going to vote on in 2018, where taxes have been in Massachusetts from 1979 to the present and prior to that, where the gaps have been. And we asked today, Tom Scott, who is our executive director for MASAS, we asked for that PowerPoint. And I think that's something you all would probably find very, very interesting, because it gives you a lot of sense of what's happened with finances over time. So overall, it's just a really good conference, so I hope next fall, maybe some of you who didn't get to go will be able to do that, and those of you who did can go back again, because I think it does have huge value. The next thing is, I've asked Kyle to talk to you, and this is something we have, we have a revised agenda, so I hope you all have that. One of the things we talked about when Kyle came on board was the fact that we do and are required to have a Parents Advisory Council for our parents of children with special needs. But typically, we've had low attendance. It's been challenging to get people here, and that's one of the things Kyle has been working on since he came to Whitman Hansen. So I asked him to give you some information on where we are and where he'd like to see that go. So thanks.
Sure. So when I did get here, I met the one parent who was actively involved, and there was other parents streaming in and out, and really talked to her about, "What's our plan? How do we get there? We've got to get information out to parents. This is a good resource for us to do it." In my experience, that you either have a very, very high enrollment in CPACs, and sometimes that's good or bad, depending on what their, you know, philosophy is, or you have it almost nonexistent. And so you really got to build that piece. So there are people out here in this district who have already stepped up and have said, you know, "I'd love to be part of that. When is it?" So I really wanted to get that message out, is we've decided that on the second Tuesday of every month, we'd be meeting for the CPAC here, 6:00 to 8:00 at night. We have speakers on a regular basis. Really, the job of the special ed parent advisory council is to advise the school committee. So to come to a school meeting once a year and talk about special ed programming that affects their children with disabilities and make sure that, you hear from a parent's sense of what's going on. I go to all the meetings. I always have. It makes a lot of sense for me, informs me on a monthly basis. It's important that we support that group, so they have an opportunity to say, "Geez, we'd love to have a speaker on autism," but we're really, we're not a group who has funds. And so it's kind of my responsibility at that point to make sure we find the people that can support the group or fund it, or whatever we need to do to make sure that that happens. And then we advertise it. And so our first meeting in October really centered around talking a little bit about transitions in special ed programming, but nothing specific, and just they were very curious about that piece. But also, how do we get more people involved so we're a stronger group and we have a voice in the district? Some parents really stood up. They started a Facebook page that they control. They control which people are on it, so it doesn't get out of control. They plan on putting community service things out on that, supporting each other. We talked about not only having the meeting once a month, but the potential of, in the future, in my last district, we started one that I went to every month, but in between that meeting, they had a parent support group. So if you have a parent with, a child with a like disability, and you feel like that's just the way you need to talk things out and create less stress in your life and have a partner in that, then that is an opportunity that I wouldn't go to, very purposely wouldn't go to, so parents could talk about their children. So it's something that goes on in every district. If you went to any other school district or a school district's website, you'd see it up on their website. We're developing that a little bit more, that it's in a good place, that's easy to get to, and you can find it on our website. We talked a lot about tweeting. We sent out today a message on School Messenger to make sure our parents know about it. We're hoping to really talk to the principals about putting it on their tweets and get it out a little bit per school, and making sure we're doing our best to try to build that group. Typically, I would say, 20, 30 parents is where you can get to. So we're at one or two. We, last meeting, got six to eight out. My guess is we'll get to, you know, in the teens this time, and we'll, as long as the speakers are good and we continually grow, it'll be a positive thing. This month, we are required each year to do the parents' basic rights, so they know what to expect and what the laws are around special education. We asked our law firm to support us in that, so they're coming in to speak Tuesday the 14th, next Tuesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 here in the library. So anyone's invited. You don't have to be a special ed parent to come. Usually, it's focused around those things, but it is an open meeting for anyone to attend.
Great. And I think it's important, I'm really excited that this is building up. As you know, when we get to budget time, much district resource is special education. So it's really important, I think, for all of us to be well-informed and also to make sure that our parents are involved as well. So I appreciate Kyle's efforts in really working on getting this up and running.
If I could just add quick to what I left out was, you know, sometimes you go to these things and you hear the complaints. Other parents that were here just were so satisfied with their journey through the school system, and they all had a bump in the road somewhere, and they felt like it got fixed okay, and they've gone on and done really well, no matter what school they were at. And it was nice to hear. Sometimes you come into a district as a new person coming in, a new administrator, and you hear the onslaught of complaints in the district, and how are you going to fix all these complaints? There really wasn't that. It was really supportive from the start, and they're really pleased with their school system.
Right. So throughout the year, you can report back to us on how this goes.
If I wanted to refer some parents, and they may already be involved, I'm not sure, but I do keep in touch with a few. Can they find it right now on our website?
It's on our website. I don't know how pronounced it is, so we've got to make sure that, I'll talk to Chad about that, and we can make sure it's right there for them. They can always call our office. We'll have all those details all the time. But I didn't care what day of the week it was or what week it was, but we decided that some parents had some things on Wednesdays, there were some things in the community on Thursdays, that we'd pick the Tuesday, and we'd keep it consistent, the second Tuesday. That way, everybody always knows, "Oh, second Tuesday, we're coming here." So you didn't have to go find it once you came once.
Great.
Kyle, if they had to get ahold of you, how can they get ahold of you if they're not comfortable with what they do see on the website? Call you here in the district?
Yeah, call me here in the district's the best way. I meet with parents daily over many things, but they can call my office, and if I'm, for some reason, out at a meeting, both the administrative assistants are in the office, and I get messages, "What a great job our office does with that." So I'll get right back to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Christine has budget report and a warrant article.
So this, the budget report is on the second page of the actual handout that was given tonight. Not a whole lot has changed since two weeks, two and a half, three weeks ago that I ran this report, but if you, the first page is the revenue. So again, the first column is the original appropriation, and then if we had any transfers or adjustments, then you'd look at the revised budget as the third. The year-to-date expenditure is actually what we've actually brought in. So since the last report on this, we've received another payment, our assessments from both towns, so we're about at the 50% mark. We have also received another, Chapter 70 reimbursement, reimbursement. The charter school is now monthly, so we have actually four payments of that as well. The transportation, we will not receive. Usually, we receive one payment in February and one in June. And then again, I want to bring to your attention again, the interest income account. We have four months' worth of interest, which is just under $25,000. David Leary will be here on the December meeting to report out where we are with that. Is there any questions?
To follow up on that, Christine, I just think it's important that the committee knows that today, I met with the auditors. We are under a complete audit, and it's good to let the public know that we have an auditing team that we hire, an outside firm that comes in and audits every single thing that goes on in this building that has to do with funding. And then they have me come in, and they ask us about 20 questions. I spent about 45 minutes with them today.
Appreciate that.
To make sure that everything that goes on is up to snuff. So David, I believe the man's name is, Adonel, from the auditing firm, will be coming in to give the committee a full report.
Dan.
Dan.
Yeah, Dan. I knew it was Dan.
He gives the D.
Probably January, hopefully it'll be January, because we're on the same time.
Yeah, they said it was Dan. I couldn't remember if it was Donna, but he's going to be coming to give us a full report, but that's coming to a conclusion. They were in the...
Yeah, they've done all their investigative work and all their testing and, you know, so forth, what they need to do. They did some in late spring, and they wrapped up today, so they need some time to decipher that.
So that's going to be coming to you, and it has to do with all of these reports.
So the second one is the actual expenditures, and the couple of major things that have happened is just two more payrolls has happened since the last report. So you'll see, the first column is the original appropriation, not requested any transfers as of yet. Third column is the revised budget, if there was a transfer. The fourth column is, shows you the year-to-date expenditure, which is the actual money and/or checks going out the door. The fifth column shows you what's encumbered for either a service or product that hasn't come in yet that we haven't paid for. And the last column shows you the available budget. And once again, they're divided by school and then district-wide. No questions.
As we know, and it's not on the agenda, but it's something that has to do with the budget report, we have to, as a committee, vote the warrant subcommittee.
Right. Yep, and there's minutes from, does Bob have the minutes?
I have them on the very last page.
Last page. Make a motion to approve the warrant subcommittee as presented.
On October 26, 2017?
Yes.
Second. Discussion?
And there's warrants here tonight. I don't know if they've all been...
All those in favor? Thank you. This is another Law 101.
That's right.
Okay, so if you remember, at last school committee meeting, we talked about the rooftop units that needed to be replaced at Whitman Middle School. The town of Whitman is now having a special town meeting on Monday, December 11th. So I have two warrant articles. One is for the reimbursement for the $15,000 for the rooftop units at Whitman Middle. It was brought to the selectmen, and they had already approved it. We spoke about that at the last meeting, so I'm going to ask that you vote that so it can go on to the special town meeting in December. The second warrant article I have is regarding the closing of Maquon School. Last meeting, I spoke about how the preschool is going to move up here to the high school, and it's going to be located in this far-right corner of the building. I spoke about the outside door entrance, interior doors between each of the rooms that are going to be for preschool, talked about the upgrade of the LED lights, and also how the movement of moving those teachers from that classroom to the three classrooms in the three, in the opposite, the same corner in the back of the building, that are now technology rooms that will lead to rip up the carpet and take out the computer wires and put down VC tile. So the total for that is $44,360,000. And Chad just got the enrollment certified, so the percentage for each of the towns really didn't move much. For Whitman, it's .582%, and Hanson is 48.18%. That being said, we're, a warrant article for the preliminary, as you can see, for the preliminary preschool movement up here of $26,536 for Whitman. And we, Ernie and I and Ruth are on the agenda for the selectmen's meeting on Tuesday night at Hanson, talked to them about this. They didn't think it was going to be any bit of an issue, since they don't have a town meeting. We've done this before. We go before the selectmen, and they give us their blessing, and then we put it on the annual town meeting.
Okay, we're going to do the Whitman one separately. An entertaining motion to...
Can I go back to the Whitman one? When I read the Whitman one, Christine, and it says Connley School?
Oh, that's...
That shouldn't be in there, I don't believe. So before you vote it, I think we need to fix that.
That came right from...
Thank you.
Okay. The first one is, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $15,000 to fund the capital cost to replace two rooftop units of the Whitman Middle School. They are no longer working and need to be replaced. That would be, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. I have a question for Ernie, because it slips my mind. Why are we just replacing two Ernie and not all of them?
I'll get him to the microphone.
I know this question was asked, but...
We had a free study done by Wentworth University. I think it's going on four years. They suggested that we replace a couple of units every year. We put them in the capital matrix every year. This time, we talked to the town of Whitman and said, "Listen, we can't go any further. The units have failed, and we need to replace these two units." So the units that we're replacing, we're taking the pots off of them, cannibalizing them, and fixing the six other units that are still working, so...
Okay.
All right?
All right. Any further discussion before we move to the vote? All those in favor? Okay. And the second one is, see if the town will vote to appropriate $26,536 from free cash to reimburse Whitman Hansen Regional School District for preliminary costs associated with moving the pre-kindergarten program from Quan School to the Whitman Hansen Regional School. An entertaining motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. This is approximately 60% of the cost. It's 59.82% to the town of Whitman. Mr. Boyce?
I know, Christine, thank you. Mentioned that Chad had the enrollment certified and finally going on the percentage, but will we get those enrollment numbers?
You will get them at the December meeting.
Excellent. Perfect.
They're already on my proposed agenda.
Excellent. That was my own question. Thank you. Just kind of...
This is for a specific, for the first phase of the construction and moving the pre-K over. There will be other dollars needed that will be coming up in the May town meeting. We're hoping to have a cost estimate to be able to give to the town at the special in December, so that the town can know the full impact.
Yeah.
But this is only a partial impact of that, and we just want it just understood so everyone's on the same page.
Well, part of it is also, it's fairly unique in Whitman to have a fall town meeting. They usually don't. Hanson always has May and October. Whitman usually just has one, and they get it done that way. So the operation is a little bit different. That's why it's coming out in pieces, but they will see a full impact.
Yeah. Just so the public doesn't think that it's only the $26,000. It is going to be higher when we get into bathrooms and...
This is just a certain piece of it.
That's right.
Everybody understand any further discussion? All those in favor? You need them, so thank you.
I have one more thing I would like to mention. You know that I've been working on looking at alternative health insurance. I will be meeting tomorrow, actually, follow-up with NFP about forming a joint purchasing agreement. But in the meantime, I went to the steering committee for Mayflower Municipal Health Group, and they are actually having a meeting on Thursday, November 30. and they are actually having a meeting on Thursday, November 30th, at 9:00 AM at the Mont Pontin in Halifax, they're going to be serving breakfast. In this, they're going to talk about important he, health issues, topics, limited, not limited to the overview of how they set, how they set the rate, their process, strategic plan discussion for 19 and beyond, and solutions for municipal employers. We will need to have a count by November 16th, so I'm going to ask Michelle to send you out an invitation, but I didn't want you, I wanted you to be aware of what it was. I think that this is going to be a very informative meeting. They, they will, they've talked about the strategic plan for FY19, and how, the overview of how they actually set their rate. So I think it'll be very informative to any and all of you that are able to make it. I know it's at 9 o'clock in the morning, but they will be serving breakfast, and they wanted us to reach out to all of our members.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Christine? Thank you, Ruth?
Great, okay, the last thing I have is really related to succession planning. And it's what happens anytime as people move on and do new and different things. I first drove to Whitman-Hanson in 1994. Little did I know what that was going to evolve into, how much I would grow, how much I would learn, and never in a million years, when I pulled up to the old high school, did I ever think I'd be superintendent of schools. So it has been an incredibly interesting 24 years. And I care deeply about this school district. And so because of that, I think it's important for us to look at what's going to come next. As you know, this year, we've had kind of an unusual arrangement in central office. I think to the surprise of many of us, we had the unexpected resignation of Pat Dillon. We have Rosman Dorance, who was with us back in the 90s here as an interim. And as a result of these many changes, it's made me think long and hard about what am I going to do next? My contract ends in 2020. However, I, I find it unlikely that I really want to live through another permutation of MCAS, which is coming up before we know it. And after giving it a tremendous amount of thought, and really looking at the talent in the district, I, I really am looking to retire probably around mid to late August of 2018. At this point, I think it would be important, based on what we do here, to make sure that whoever does come in new, does have some transition time with me to see how we do things here, and to help with that. So that date is kind of tentative at this point in time, and certainly would be worked out with the committee as we move forward. The other reason that I'm talking about this at this point is we have an opening for an assistant superintendent. I don't think it's really fair, when I know that I'm going to be leaving, for me to be the person who would determine who the next assistant superintendent would be, or to recommend that person to you. I really think that should be the job of the new, newly-appointed superintendent. So, the reason I wanted to, to do this tonight, even though it's November and we're talking about something that's going to happen nine, 10 months from now, I think it's important to have us all think about how we want to go about this in terms of search committees. Back when John McEwen retired, his position was, was filled first, and then we worked together to fill the assistant superintendent position. But I wanted to bring that out to you, because I do think it's really important that we keep this district moving forward. I think a lot's been accomplished, but I think there's still a tremendous amount that still needs to be done. And just care so much about this place, I think we ought to start now in terms of moving forward. So, it's important for me to mention that to you all. We've got a really busy year ahead, committed 100% to, to seeing us through this year and to getting us off to a good start next year. I also have a grandchild on the way that I had never anticipated, and I know I'm going to be needed. So there's also a great incentive here as well. And I want to thank this committee and the district for the tremendous support. Even though we're always doing more with less, we keep doing more, and, and we do it really well. So I thank you for this great opportunity, too. So that's sort of where we are, and I think now the planning will be is how do we want to organize, looking for these new positions.
Okay, first of all, I would like to thank Dr. Ruth Gilbert-Witman for all of her service in many, many different roles in this district. For those of you that haven't been here as long as some of us have, it's been quite an enjoyable and quite an educational ride that we've taken together here in the district. And so I'd like to thank her publicly, she's done a fabulous job. And just the fact that she's notifying us with enough time, and I'll be giving you in a moment my recommendations and our recommendations on what we should do for a committee, but she has accomplished many, many things. John McEwen was the first superintendent that I was on a committee with, and there's only been two. Thank God there's only been two, because a superintendent's shelf life, by the way, Masco tells it, is 2.87 years. And both of these superintendents have been here a long time, so that says something about the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, so thank you. I also think it's admirable that she wants to sit with us and, and hang with us, so to speak, through the transition, because the transition period becomes very difficult. And getting to that, I was, I don't know if I was the chair of this committee during it, I believe I was, but the last, there are several ways to handle looking for a superintendent. You can get a hold of MAS, and the cost for that is between $25,000 and $35,000. I've done a little research with it, and a lot of school districts impanel a few school committee members, the chair, a couple people from the public, some of the administrators that are currently in the building, a teacher or two. And it seems like they've had more success, and as of even recent, a few that have come to mind, and I won't mention what towns they are, have paid the fee and found that they had an internal person that was the pick of theirs. So it runs between $25,000 and $35,000. It's something you can think about and do a little research, I'm not looking for you to make this decision, it's something that I think everybody should sit and talk about, we have another meeting, we do have some time. But the time between now and August is going to go like, phew, and we're going, this needs to be done right away, quickly. So think about what you want to do, if you want to research it a little bit, you can go to, I think it's MAS.
Well, and NSDEC does it as well, that's another organization, right, yeah.
Because there are a couple of different ways of doing it. It, it involves a weeding-out process, you know, we have to post the job opening, we'll have tremendous amount of applications, I've sat through that process, it's, it's almost like doing negotiating with WHGA, you know, you have hours where you, you have people come in and you're talking to them and seeing, and then you have to do site visits at times. Very sim, similar to sometimes getting a principal. I think we...
Very similar.
Yeah, when we, when we had the selection of Jeff's position, we went to, I think I went to West Bridgewater.
West Bridgewater, right.
Right. So it's something for you to think about, it's something to think about if you want to be involved with that process, it's very tedious. It's not something that happens overnight. And again, this is something that everybody needs to let, set in a little bit. I'd take a little input at the next meeting, if we all think about it and see what you want to do. I think to spend $25,000 to $35,000 might be a little much, when I think every, there's some people in the community and people right on this committee here that can, can make that determination, and obviously Ruth's going to be with us, and, and, you know, we're going to move forward with it. Robbie, do you have a question?
It, well, for the next meeting, I was just going to ask, do we have the option legally? I know in the municipalities they do, but I don't know for a position like this, could you just post it internally? Because I'm just, off the top of my head, I can think of five people that I know have this...
You can do this any way you want. I mean, clearly, if you look at a, a school district like Rockland, John Retchless retired, and Alan Cron became superintendent. I mean, that's probably, I don't think politically great for a school committee to do that, but clearly, you can do it any way that, it's the school committee's purview as to how you choose to do that.
Okay. Just curious.
Yes.
Thank you, Ruth, for your many years here.
It's one of the jobs of the school committee is hiring superintendent.
But you can do it lots of different ways.
Okay, yeah.
And there are several ways to do it, Robbie, and in fact, I started the investigation, because obviously I had a little bit of look at it, and there's no set way of doing it.
None at all.
Some districts do hire. And I, looking at it, and after speaking with different ones, especially, I mean, going back when, when John was here, and we, we interviewed Ruth and several other candidates. There were candidates that applied, and again, I'm just going to generalize for the job, when I was on that committee, and... Yeah, it, it was pretty evident, Bob, some of them walked in and you were like, "No, no, no."
What I'm, what I'm trying to remember is, did we just advertise for the job?
Yes, the last time.
We didn't go through...
No.
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 We talked about it, and clearly, at that point in time, I was covering for Dr. McEwen, because he was ill that year. And, you know, even at that point, I didn't know if I was going to get it, but it was advertised, and we had outside candidates and had the interviews here, we had three finalists for that one.
Yeah. We had approximately, was it 18, Ruth, or 20?
I don't know, I didn't pay attention to it. I just hoped for the best, that was, being honest, I didn't even look at who the competition was.
I think, Bob, we had 18 or 20 when we started, and we kind of kept whittling it down until we ended up with three. But again, three doesn't have to be your magic number, you could, you could, if you had five that were all, or you had four, it's up to the committee to make that decision, and then, and go through that process. But I'd like to see everybody, just for the sake of having a little bit more time, to have some input, and maybe do some of your own research, to see what you want to do. But come to the next meeting ready, because next meeting, we're going to get it done.
You should start after Christmas, I would think.
I'm going to, I think we should start...
I mean, start the heavy-duty piece of it.
Right.
Yeah, because then you're going to want to hire an assistant superintendent.
I'd like to go into the Christmas break, knowing that we have down on paper how we're going to start this process. And then run the ads and, and get it done, because I'm telling you, the end of the school year is going to come just like this, because there's still a lot to do in running this district, so. Any questions? Again, thank you, and Ruth, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
I'm still working.
It didn't go on notes.
I'm still working.
Okay, we already did the knock-on discussion, Maquon, closing update.
Who wants to do that? Well, I've got good people here who are part of that. In looking, we've been meeting quite regularly, and our most recent meeting was yesterday. And really looking at how we're going to phase this, what all the aspects of this process are. And clearly, we've been working on this since the beginning of the school year, the most recent meeting was a parent meeting held on October 19th, where we met with parents of students who would be going from the Indian Head School to the Hanson Middle School, and from the Maquon School to the Indian Head School. Bill Tranter, Josh Belvis, Beth Wilcox, Kyle Riley, Kyle Riley and I were there. Really felt it was very positive, we got, answered a lot of questions. Clearly, the move to Hanson Middle School is probably the most stress-free, because the space there due to reduced enrollment at Hanson Middle School is a nice wing for the 5th grade. The expense of moving from Indian Head to Hanson Middle for that is not going to be the lion's share of this. Really, now it's answering, answering some technical questions about schedules and report cards and self-contained and those kinds of things. So that's pretty good. In terms of Indian Head School, that's a little bigger nut to crack, because it's the arrangement of the rooms, it's figuring out enough spaces for everyone, it's retrofitting bathroom areas. But we've been working very closely with Beth Wilcox to look at what the floor plan of that is going to look like. As recently as the facilities subcommittee meeting, earlier this evening, Ernie talked about where the bathrooms would be. And I think Beth has a, a pretty solid notion of how the classrooms are going to be arranged, keeping, you know, grade levels together, not spreading them out all over the school. So, but that's going to be a bigger move, because when we walk through Indian Head, there's a lot of stuff that's been there, and that building is the same age I am. So you collect a lot of stuff in that many years, and there's going to be a lot of cleaning up and things that are going to need to be done. So that's an issue there, and reworking of classrooms. Also, you know, there's lead paint and asbestos and all those things that Indian Head brings with it, but we'll be looking at that. Maquon School is another issue, because that's been open since the mid-1960s, and I'm sure there's some original stuff in that building that's going to mean, need to be discarded and moved as well, and it's really getting that done. So we're looking at the logistics of moving, the facilities, things like that, so all of those things are in progress. I know Ernie's going to have dumpsters available after the first of the year for cleaning out some of these things that don't need to be there. We've worked on the moving plans, helping teachers pack up things they don't even want to have at school, so those things are in process. The other piece is the opening of the preschool here at the high school, and Kyle, you want to talk about that? Because you've been real instrumental in it.
Which portion do you want me to talk about, about?
Well, about, sort of where we are.
Okay. So Christine did a nice job of describing that, and facilities, finance meeting, I should say, no, facilities.
Facilities, yeah.
So, yeah, we looked at, and the whole team looked at, you know, everything from which way is the best way to drive in to what's the safest thing for kids, both outside the building, inside the building. Ruth was alluding to some of the things that came up along the way, that we've looked at schedules, those kind of things. I think that's come to work, what we've been doing with principals, with Ernie, budgeting, some of the things that you don't think of, so we dropping off your preschool child who's three or four years old at a high school now, what does that look like for a parent? Again, I shared with you that I've gone through this, but in the drop-off area, is it a safe place to drop off? Should we have an awning over the door in case on a rainy day? Is there a playground up here, how do we put a playground up here, how close does that need to be to the door? So a lot of those conversations are going on, we want to make sure that if it was possible, and it is, to cut indoors from room to room, so that although there's an opportunity to kind of shut down the hallway with doors, the least activity in the hallways, the better, I think, for smaller children. So we really did look at how are we going to put doors from classroom to classroom to stop that moving, movement, and keep it to a minimal. Making sure that all kids are getting what they need, too, so that we do have programs in the preschool, we do need a sensory room, we do need office space, so all those things that we're looking at right now really benefit parents as they come up here, because this is a scary move to a high school, it's, you know, you think about high school in general, not even this high school, is, there's these 15, 18-year-old kids up there about to drop off my three and four-year-old, what's that look like? So make sure it's safe, the aesthetics are good, and you have a plan that doesn't interfere with the high school plan and the good things that are going on already up here.
Okay, thanks. And Jeff, maybe talk about the high school part of it, then?
Sure, there's, there's some moving parts here, as you alluded to, moving some classrooms around, and it's going to be a, a little cultural shift for, for some of my staff. But one of the things we've been working on is making sure that that preschool is its own little entity in that, that subsection of the building. One of the proposals Ernie has is putting up some doors, so that we're not going to have traffic. I'll be reeducating kids about, once that becomes, because we're hoping to break some ground in December, January this year. I think there's some cautious apprehension on the part of the high school staff, bringing in little kids, it's going to be a cultural shift for our kids here. But I think the end game over the next couple of years, the programs that we can build, and then I will say that this is one of the safest buildings in the building, you'll have many adult eyes on these little kids, and I think it'll be a great opportunity for them to start here and finish here in, in 15 years, you know? So we're going to be moving those things around as we get some funding and buy some equipment. It's really technology equipment that we're looking for and moving some things around. We break ground, I think those are things that are in, in place. But we're, you know, personally, I'm looking forward to it, it's, it's a change. I think Kyle's done a great job of outlining what we have to do. And my teachers that I'm going to be speaking to shortly, once the committee, you know, has approved everything that we needed to approve, telling them where they're going to go and how that might shift up by second semester.
And I think one of the things we've looked at is, we can't do all of it over the summer, that's absolutely can't happen. So the goal is to get the work done for the preschool, which is why you did the vote earlier for the warrant article, done prior to the end of the school year. That way, Ernie and his, his folks who work with him are not going to have this mountain that needs to be done. So the idea would be, get the preschool done, even begin that as, as early as Janu, I guess you're even saying holiday break, begin starting doing that, Chad's got a lot of technology pieces that need to be done. But by staging this process, we should be able to get the preschool moved, and then begin cleaning things up at the buildings as they begin to move. So, you know, we're meeting about every other week now, I imagine, after Thanksgiving. you know, we're meeting about every other week now, I imagine. After Thanksgiving, it's going to be much more of a once a week. And our goal is on December 13th at the school committee meeting to be able to really say to you, this is what is our best estimate that this is going to cost. Because we certainly don't want to create this notion that this doesn't cost anything because it absolutely does cost money. When you take a building offline, you are reducing those costs. But in order to take that building offline, you need to be able to retrofit and make improvements in other areas. Over time, not having to keep McQuan operating will certainly reduce costs. But that's not something that's going to happen overnight. So we're looking at what are those costs that won't go into the budget for next year as well as over time, what do we see is going to happen? So there's a lot to think about. We do have a really solid team working on this. Christine's here this evening. She's part of it. Chad's part of it. Ernie, Kyle, and many others. Really trying to think this all out and making sure we do this as smoothly as possible.
I think a large piece of this, Ruth, is going to be the communication piece to the parents.
It's huge.
There's some apprehension. There's some nervous parents that we are going to have to have meetings, posted meetings, to keep the parents in the loop. So everybody kind of gets that urgency and knows exactly what's going on. I think that's a giant part of it. Fred?
Mr. O'Brien had an idea earlier, brought up. You did. You know, the possibility of starting school after Labor Day, just to give that little extra time. If that became a viable option, what would A, be the latest that we could implement something like that? And B, of course, you'd want to give parents as much heads-up time.
You have to vote the school calendar in the spring. But I would hope you could get it, we can get it done by the end of August, largely because we never know. We've already canceled school one day this year. So that's a real problem and there's a huge push in the state. I mean, this was from the late commissioner, was to have us, everyone start in August if you possibly could. I think, I don't think, Ernie, you're concerned that you can't get it all done. Are you, Ernie?
Lot of pressure.
Look at him. He's as relaxed as he can be.
I wasn't so assured with that, no. I wasn't, that wasn't, you know.
Ernie's going to be a little ragged.
I think we'd have to see and if we'd have to adjust it. We did that when we opened, there was, was it Hanson Middle? No? I don't know. There was one time we went after Labor Day because we were doing a building project.
I'm just thinking that if we were to do it and it made sense to just be proactive and give ourselves a little buffer, you'd also want to let parents know as early as possible so that way they can make their summer arrangements.
Clearly, you would have to, you know, some of the things we give people off during the year, we might not be able to do. So. Ernie, do you say, did you want to add anything? No?
No, I can, Ruth.
Okay, you may. You may. I do.
I think proper planning, and that's what we're doing. There were some questions during the facilities subcommittee meeting. You know, the timeframe on doing certain things like Indian Head. We're putting some girls' and boys' bathrooms and some staff bathrooms over there that are not there now, but the infrastructure's there. The contractor that we hire, we're going to ask them to a start date and a finish date, just like we've done with the turf field. We've identified that you need to be done at this time and we press that time. We'll do the same thing at Indian Head. The reason we've asked for the phasing, the Phase 1 being here at the high school, we have some computer labs that Jeff Simonak said at this timeframe, we can change those classrooms over. The notes that I have are January 22nd. So that goal for me during the Christmas break is to get those rooms ready to go by January 22nd. So that's the communication that we had. So all of the, you know, when we think of closing of the McQuan, the push for us this summer after we get the preschool classrooms done here is to get the Indian Head School up and running. Like Ruth said, the fifth grade, the Hanson Middle is a no-brainer. It's moving expenses and that's about it. But for Indian Head, we have, we're changing the entrance to the doorway where the security, as you come in the front door, that's going to change. So all of that, and I mentioned this to the facility for subcommittee today. I sat down the other day. I thought I had everything narrowed down, but we've added things. I've added things to my list. So we're continuing to evolve, but we want to capture everything, identify the expenses by a certain date, let the towns know what we're going to do. And then once we do that, we'll have contractors ready, set, go when school's out to get Indian Head completed.
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you know, I also wanted to add, I talked about the planning team. Also, our building principals have been super helpful with this. Jeff here at the high school really has welcomed the idea of preschool, right, Jeff? Yes, he likes little people. And Beth Wilcox trying to operate two schools this year. When you see her, just thank her. She's doing a great job and really trying to keep people in the loop. And Bill Tranter has been super helpful as well. So it's really a strong and excellent team trying to work this out. But as Ernie said, we're always thinking of new things, but that's why we meet regularly as well.
Robbie?
I just had a question either for Ruth or for Jeff. So in the high school, you're going to have both opposite ends of the spectrum. As far as the staff goes for the preschool, I guess my comment would be, I just want to make sure they don't get lost, that it isn't the high school staff and then the preschool staff.
That's important consideration, yeah.
I know they're opposite ends of the spectrum as far as teaching, learning and what the times are going to be and things like that.
Trish is still going to be the director of pre-K, but I'm going to include them as part of the building. So, you know, they can join my staff. They can have their own. But it's not going to be, I'm not evaluating them.
Right.
You know what I mean?
No, I understand that.
So, but absolutely include them in the culture of the building. And I think that can work out tremendously on both sides. Because they can see some of the fruits of their labor when the seniors are walking across at graduation, you know what I mean, of what they did when they were in pre-K. So trying to get them involved, any of the safety procedures, we already went through when we did our mock evacuation, we already found a place for the pre-K to be and stay. So we're looking for that piece. And as they come in, we will integrate them and be part of the building, separate staff, but part of the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
And you know, we have the partners in business program as well that gives students school-to-career opportunities. Not that we jump into that maybe the first year, but over time, it's a wonderful opportunity and there are many aspects in terms of people interested in early childhood, special education, number of things. And then the plan is that Trish Collins' office would be where student services is. So she would be with other people who are taking care of kids. So, and I mean, I think it's good to be mindful that you don't forget that people are in a building, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, Ruth?
No, that's good. We'll keep you updated.
Moving on to new business. I have a request from the town clerk to change the calendar and I will read you the request. Yeah, Mr. Hayes, I would like to, I would like to give you the date for the known state election that will take place during the upcoming school year of 2018, 2019. So the school committee could take into consideration not having school on that date. We have to move elections to Hanson Middle School with the closing of McQuan School. The move has been discussed with both the director of facilities, Ernie Sandlin, and the Hanson Middle School principal, William Tranter. School election date is Tuesday, November 9th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It would be great, it would be greatly appreciated if you and the committee could make this happen. They are asking for us to close school now. We cannot just close Hanson Middle School. We have to close the district for the day. It's a calendar change. Does everyone understand that? You can't have Hanson Middle just close and have them go to school one pot of another day and have this district not operating. It would mean we're closing school on Tuesday, November 9th, 2018, the whole, the whole district. I'd entertain a motion and we can go into discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
No, we haven't.
We actually.
We would incorporate this into the calendar. In the past, and this was with our previous collective bargaining agreements, prior to the recession, election day was a full professional development day. And that was really terrific because we were doing it in entire southeastern Massachusetts. So if a teacher was low incidence, like an art teacher, we'd do art things, things like that. We don't know what the collective bargaining agreement is going to come up with, but you know, that's certainly something to consider as well.
That's my call is wrong. November 9th is on a Friday. So are they looking at really November 6th? I'm just looking ahead. It's November 2018.
I have November 9th from the town clerk.
That's a Friday.
It's going to be a Tuesday.
So it's going to be Tuesday.
So they mean that Tuesday, I'm sure, yeah.
I kind of like the Friday the 9th.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
What about?
I think one of the, one of the reasons, Kevin, she's asking for this, is so she can plan ahead. I know we haven't voted the calendar, but if we vote this in, then she can plan ahead. She gets very, very nervous about election day. I've had this discussion whether we've had police details at McQuan School. It's stressful. So that's why she's asking that we consider it so far.
They don't know what it's going to be like at Hanson Middle. That's what I think is probably what, they've never done it before. It is not one bit unusual for children to be in school and people voting in schools. I mean, I live in Hingham. Happens all the time. They do not close school typically unless it's a major presidential election and it would be just crazy to do it. But they've done it for years where I go vote at the high school and high school's going on, or it used to be the middle school. So it's not unusual to do it, but it also, it's not unusual to close as well. So it's really kind of up to you all.
Fifty-fifty roll of the dice. It extends the school year.
So can we, can we stay on that discussion point? So if we were to not close the school, are there security concerns?
I don't know. I mean, what we've done, we typically have had school at McQuan and voting unless it's a major presidential election. Hanson Police has been superb in providing security to make sure that no one gets into the building. Kids ate their lunches in the classroom. Clearly, the traffic at McQuan's always a challenge because of the way that parking lot works, but that's been going on for years and years. But Bob's right. We get this request and, you know, if it's a small primary, if it's like, was it non-election a couple of days ago?
Do we know where the voting would take place specifically from the school?
Probably be in the gym, I would think. I don't know where else you'd put it. Do you?
Hanson Middle, I think what the plan is, and it hasn't been completely, to answer your question, Chris, it hasn't been completely mapped out yet. If you're going to use Hanson Middle, you would close the gate to the main school building. You would use the community end of the building for voting. You probably would walk into the gym. She has many, many booths set up. Maybe go to the right, go around and maybe not come out the back doors, maybe come back in. That's something, it's up to the clerk. That's her responsibility and that's how she may do it. I know she changed the flow at McQuan School because it used to go in, you'd vote, you'd go out the back of the cafeteria, you'd take a left and come back around and come back out the front door. Recently, you go in the front, she's got it all set up and you come right back out the cafeteria and do it to the side and go right back to the front parking lot as you vote. So that's the town clerk's thing. Specifically, she's requesting this and that's why I'm discussing it.
What about the primary in September?
Typically, for the smaller elections, they don't, they just let it happen. That's what they've done because it's smaller turnout. And mostly, it's the major elections that we've gotten the conversations about.
Kevin?
So is this a break with our practice? Like this would represent a new?
This is going to be the first time it's in the Hanson Middle School. It's always been at McQuan.
No, we actually closed for election day for the recent presidential election.
Right. Besides presidential elections, do we normally?
We typically have had school and people aren't too happy with us. I mean, that's what's happened. It is, and yet, you know, life goes on. So I don't know.
What's, what's Principal Trant's stance on it?
I haven't talked to him about it.
Because the only thing I'm thinking about is traffic pattern-wise in there.
Traffic's a problem.
When you come in, teacher parking is full during the day. The majority of the spaces in the front of that building are full. You go to the next parking lot, buses come out that way. So.
Parking could be part of the challenge.
Parking's very challenging there.
Yeah. I mean, not that it's great at McQuan School either, but.
It's a little more open there. It's a little more open.
Whereas, yeah, parking's going to be an issue. Not that I'm expecting huge voter turnouts, but.
But it could, could.
When you talk about professional development, could you incorporate it into that day?
If we get another one, we don't have enough, we only have two and they're the first two days of school. We used to have three prior to the contract, but that's up for negotiations. But certainly, if that day's off and that happens, you could put it.
Parent-teacher conferences?
Well, you could.
Is it right around that time right now? Because it's parent-teacher conference, half-day today because of parent-teacher.
Right.
So within a couple of days of it.
Yeah, but, yeah. So it would count maybe as a teacher day, but not as a?
Do a half-day?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Makes it easier?
Yeah.
Thinking about the parking, Robbie, you think parking's going to be a problem at that building because the teacher parking takes up the front parking lot in pot of the side.
It's fairly full.
Yeah.
I mean, I would.
Think you'd have to look at it.
I talked to Principal Trant to see what his thought is on it.
Would, I have a motion in a second. Would anybody like to make a motion to table us until we talk to Tranter and maybe?
I will draw the motion.
Okay.
Go make a motion to table it.
Second.
Paul?
I have a question. What is the estimated voter turnout? Is I think, is it not the US Senate being voted in that day, the midterm election?
Yeah, it's going to be, and it's also going to be the millionaire tax.
Right. So those are two big issues, I think, that people are going to be focusing on.
I think it'll be a pretty big election.
So I mean, I don't really, I don't really think about how the, how the governors operate.
Get the sales tax.
There's a lot going on.
Chad?
And Hanson.
Yeah, it's a big election.
That would be a top of the venture.
The way that the school's set up, I think that it's actually way better than McQuan is now where they, where you could have school because you cordon off that whole end of the building where you're not affecting any of the cafeteria. You're just affecting the gym. So the kids wouldn't be able to use the gym. But coming in that side, that entrance on that end, going through the gym and blocking out the back of the gym, you wouldn't affect school at all. I mean, even if there's a large crowd, you have to deal with the parking, but there's such a large driveway and parking lot in the back, all the way wrapping around. I mean, I think it's actually suited probably better than McQuan is. So.
And we had looked at it in the past when there were the concerns about the young children in McQuan with the voting. And remember, Ernie, we looked at it for that.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm fine with tableing, but just for me, I'm fine with closing. I mean, if we know ahead of time that we're not going to have school, I'm sure we can make it work in the calendar somehow. So.
Well, even if we don't close, again, if we're able to do half-day parent-teacher conferences, we'll do something else that you're not extending into June.
But I mean, if the, if, you know. Clerk wants to know.
And if we can't, we can't close, that's fine.
Is asking for us to make that accommodation, I'm fine with doing it. I mean, no big deal.
Run a table, I have a motion to table in a second. We can bring it up at the next meeting. All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Sorry, Beth. Next meeting. Michelle, can you remember to put that?
I did the, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, surplus.
Okay, there's no real, is there any letter for surplus, Michelle?
Yeah, I think.
There is one. Oh, okay. I hadn't seen it.
Dear Dr. Gilbert Whitner, in anticipation of the 2018 closing for the McQuan School, it will be necessary to surplus outdated materials. Outdated materials such as encyclopedia's, old science texts and reading series no longer used will need to be removed. I respectfully request permission to assess the collection of materials at both McQuan and Indian Head to surplus any outdated materials. Sincerely, Beth Wilcox, principal.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? unanimous. This is a real easy one. Acceptance of gifts. The Hanson PTO recently organized the Boost-a-thon fundraiser at McQuan and Indian Head Elementary Schools. Due to the generous donations and fundraising efforts, the PTO raised $30,000.
Wow.
I respectfully request approval from the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District School Committee to accept the donation on behalf of the Hanson PTO. Sincerely, Elizabeth Wilcox, principal.
Second.
Discussion. What I would like to say to the Hanson PTO is, thank you, thank you. What a fabulous fundraiser.
Amazing.
$30,000. Thank you to everyone on Hanson PTO and everyone that was involved in the Boost-a-thon fundraiser.
It was.
That's awesome.
It took the day. It was fun because I went to all of them.
Good, good.
Yeah, it was all, it was, yeah, the kids enjoyed it. It was pretty funny. It was pretty interesting to watch.
That's incredible.
The people that ran it were phenomenal. They really were.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on accepting $30,000? Does anybody got any problem with that? All those in favor? unanimous, thank you. Members of the school committee, State Street Corporation. Members of the school committee, State Street Corporation suggests a program in which employees volunteer at nonprofits or charities in exchange for a donation to a program of the employee's choice. Erin Barata, a parent of the McQuan School, has participated in the program, generating a donation of $750. Wow. She wishes to donate the $750 to the McQuan School. I respectfully request approval from the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee to accept the donation on her behalf and the State Street Corporation. Thank you to her. That is another fabulous thing. $750,000 a parent coming forward to do the.
$750.
$750.
But I like, I like you.
I was, I was projecting for the next one, you know.
Next parent, then you set the bar high, Bob.
Right. But fabulous, just fabulous. Congratulations to Erin.
You have a motion and a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. And we have one more donation. This subject is the Bruno Malinowski Memorial Scholarship. I am probably the only one in the room that knows who Bruno Malinowski was.
No, he was my gym teacher.
That's right, two years older than I am. Kathy? I'm, I'm hoping you could help me, appoint me in the right direction. I'm the executor of my parents' estate. Almost 20 years ago, we established a Bruno Malinowski Memorial Scholarship. My mother, Marie Malinowski, passed away earlier this year. She was also a teacher at Whitman High School 60-plus years ago. In place of my dad's memorial scholarship, I was interested in possibly making a one-time donation of approximately $10,000 to the Whitman Regional School, Whitman Region, Whitman-Hanson Regional High School. Would there be any opportunity to help remodel a conference room or a room in the gym? I have a small plaque on the wall recognizing my parents. I'm open to other ideas. I appreciate any thoughts, ideas, or help you can provide me. Thank you. Barry Malinowski. Bruno Malinowski was a gym teacher in this district, and he was well-respected, tremendously respected, as Mr. Tean was. He was a name, he lived in Abington on Bedford Street, and everybody knew him, and he was a giant hulk of a man, and he was very well-respected, very well-liked. And I remember him as a gym teacher. The only reason Boyce resembles him is he probably had to stand at the fence a few times because he got a little fresh in gym. But he was a great, great guy. So, I would entertain a motion to accept approximately this $10,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion about Mr. Malinowski's donation?
I'm thinking about abstaining.
I would think that we would do something appropriate within the gymnasium to recognize.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure that out, yeah. I agree with you. And the gym is the perfect place because Mr. Malinowski was a gym teacher. God bless him. He was a great guy. I remember him. I can hear his voice right now. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. I do not have any field trips because I think we did about 15 of them at the last. Subcommittee reports, warrant subcommittee.
Awesome.
I took care of that earlier on the vote. Policy subcommittee.
We're meeting next week.
Facilities and capital improvements, Fred?
We met earlier tonight. Couple of things to go over. First off, with the signage in the property, there have been a couple of instances of horses on school grounds of the past weeks. Mr. Jones ran into a young lady on a horse just Saturday, and I guess there was quite a few of them.
Figure.
Up here. So, we're going to add, as we put up the no dogs allowed sign, to include no horses allowed on the property as well. So, we'll get that moving. The town of Whitman is going to be putting an article onto their special town meeting for the Duval Roof to try and add to the monies that they currently have to at least get one phase of that project moving forward. So, we can hopefully be plugging the leaks there, or at least starting to. Indian Head, the air handler has been delivered. It's sitting in the parking lot, and I guess the crane will be there tomorrow morning at 6:30 a.m. to put that onto the roof and get that installed. The high school crosswalks, the poles are in, and the facilities department will be installing those in the near future. Whitman Middle School RTOs, the rooftop units have been shipped, and those are due to arrive next week. I think that's about it.
That's good.
Any questions for Mr. Small? Thank you, Fred. Legislative update.
Yes, nothing currently school-related with criminal justice reformers this coming week.
Any questions for Mike? Pilgrimage collaborative?
So, budget subcommittee meeting, which was just myself, we've added other members since then, was October 30, and we'll do a presentation of amending the budget for Pilgrimage Collaborative in December. So, December, I'll have further news for you on that. But we did meet last week, our regular school committee meeting, school collaborative meeting. We have mentioned before that the executive director is stepping down next November. She is retiring. We are doing the same search that we did with North River Collaborative, in a sense, and actually, we're looking into some of those avenues. The interesting thing is our current chair is interested in the position, so he had to leave the room while we were meeting so we could discuss the, sort of starting discussion of the logistics of that. So, we'll be moving forward. We have a very kind of short committee in a sense that one town, Middle Bow, had not sent any recognition of a representative as for a letter or anything. And a few of the other members, once in a while, you know, it's a little tough to get to in Pinewood and so forth, so they, or their schedule's been a little bit complicated. So, we're hoping that, and I mentioned it to our vice chair, we can all tie together and just move forward, maybe use a consultant that we used for North River. And other than that, just regular school business for the collaborative. Enrollment's up. We're at 120 students.
Any questions for Mr. Boyce? Thank you. Negotiation subcommittee, we have an executive session to discuss a few things, and we'll be moving forward with that. Regional Agreement Committee, we had to postpone the last regional agreement because we had no school that day because of the bad weather and no power. And some of the gentlemen that were on that committee were traveling from a distance, so we thought it better, and it's been rescheduled. We have a couple of dates.
It's Monday.
So, it's next Monday, right?
The 13th.
Yeah.
At?
6 o'clock.
Right here in the library. So, it's Monday, the 13th.
Of November, yep.
Of November, 6 o'clock here in the library for anybody that wants to attend. The Regional Agreement Committee, it is an open meeting, open to everyone. We have to go into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Whitman-Hanson Education Association because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of a public body, and I have so, as the chair declared. Also, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, federal grant and aid requirements for the approval of executive session meetings under mass general law, small c, 30a, section 19a. When we come out of executive session, we will not be taking other, any other votes other than a vote to adjourn. Thank you all. Good night.